...with information required for you to make informed decisions about its fate in accordance with provisions from Chapter 238 of our plan of regulations and to fulfill civic duty, the Association of Royal Nichols House to Detention City by voting an application for historic property dedication. My client has asked that you accept the recommendation of your Historic Preservation Commission to designate Nichols House as historic property. The commission's recommendation was carefully considered and a strong one. It was fair. It was reached through a process. It was based on evidence gathered by independent research and on expert evaluations by the city's own staff. It weighed opposing viewpoints. It reflected the correct understanding of both the facts and principles involved. Since being named, it has been corroborated by the Georgia Department of Natural Resources' Historic Preservation Office, which in a newly considered preliminary finding dated 7 October declared the Nichols House to be eligible for the National Register. Any representation of the Nichols House is not meeting the standards for a historic property such as was made in the documents submitted to the city on or about October 6 and repeated in today's valid times is therefore false. The Nichols House does meet the standards for historic property. It is not merely historic, it is significantly historic. There is, in my professional opinion, no more significant 20th century house in Valdosta. It is exactly a historic building and Chapter 238 is intended to identify and protect for a public good. It is hard to find better examples of that sort of any date, anywhere in town. It is only right and is impressive. The Nichols House is now the best documented historic house in Malles County. For that reason alone, it would be the house most likely to be studied by the future historians of Valdosta. The details of its design, construction, history of ownership, history of maintenance, and history of use, the record of crimes committed within it and against it, the names of every person who has defended it and every person who will advocate its demise, are recorded for posterity in numerous publications and increasingly luminous public records. Much of the credit of Valdosta's concerns and misery are the little documents about it that have been offered up by private hands to be placed in public repositories there to pose balance in which history will judge us all. The Nichols House provides the key to understanding what all Valdosta's built heritage of 1950s means. It represents the very best that the great Federation left as their permanent request, bequest to this city. As early as next month, I predict, anyone reading the minutes of today's meeting will be astonished to learn that that bequest was ever even considered to deserve less respect than the World War II veterans who commissioned and delivered it. You are now aware of many proofs of the Nichols House's historic significance. There is now no risk whatsoever of the house being lost by inadvertence. If it is to be destroyed, it can be destroyed only by individuals with full and complete awareness and thus with premeditation that they are destroying a major part of Valdosta's heritage. No one has a right to destroy the heritage of Valdosta. No one has a right to preserve it either. But the city of Valdosta has the freedom to assure that the historic structures standing within its boundaries remain available to promote the general welfare, aesthetics, and public education of the citizens of Valdosta. The exercise of that freedom, mind you, the chosen representatives of those citizens, should not be constrained by allegations of taking, whether by inverse condemnation or under any other theory. The Supreme Court disposed of the takings question in its 1978 ruling in the Penn Central case. The court found that historic property regulations do not constitute a taking because the regulations do not interfere with the owner's reasonable investment back expectations. The Nichols House fully deserves the protection that the city of Valdosta has every reason and full freedom to accord it under the powers reserved to the city under Chapter 238. It ranks among Valdosta's most architecturally remarkable structures. It exemplifies technical excellence. It documents important historical trends. It is connected with numerous historical figures, including Lloyd Greer. It is valuable not only to Valdosta but also to Malles County, the state of Georgia, and even the United States. The state declared its interest in the Nichols House by including it in the 2003 Historic Resources Survey of Malles County. We ask you to safeguard simultaneously the city's, the county's, and the state's interests by approving the recommendation before you. Through the process that generated the facts about the Nichols House that you now have, the Alden Home Owners Association and I became aware of a disturbing situation. To fulfill another civic duty, my clients have asked me to bring it immediately to your attention. They and I are convinced that the historic preservation process in Valdosta is not working as the enabling ordinance intended, either to benefit of property owners or to assure the retention of Valdosta's genuinely historic structures. The city has vast areas full of buildings that are not historically valuable and yet that are protected. On the other hand, it has dozens of historic buildings that are unprotected or whose claim to protection is contested when it should be unquestioned. Many citizens charge, we think justifiably, that the Historic Preservation Commission often functions not as a liberatory body, as it did correctly in the case of Nichols House, but instead and inappropriately as a design review board. To any of you who knows or who believes that we are right in our assessment, my clients say that the time to acknowledge that truth is now. They ask you to confess to the public now that the issues involved will not be resolved in this meeting in the next few minutes. Neither preserving nor impeding the Nichols House will resolve them. My clients and I believe that they would best be resolved in a public forum in which all sides on the issues can debate or explore. We are convinced that consensus can be reached on a solution that will both confirm the correctness of your decision to preserve the Nichols House and strengthen Valdosta's ability to gain full benefit from historic preservation. We believe it is urgently important to reform the uses that Valdosta's detriment are undermining public confidence in historic preservation and are thereby contributing even today to threats against the Nichols House. It would be wrong to make the Nichols House a victim of anyone's dissatisfaction or doubts about Valdosta's historic preservation process. It will be right to use the preservation of the Nichols House as a starting point for fixing that process. My clients ask the city not only to protect the Nichols House, but also once it has protection to give all possible assistance to its owners in finding a proper use for it, finding financing its maintenance, and selling it if desired. They ask that you do so to strike a balance in the cause of justice. And they ask you to remember that the sale of a historic house to a sympathetic buyer normally takes more than a few months. Because the city as a whole stands to benefit from the preservation of the Nichols House, the city should express its gratitude for the Georgia Sigma Housing Corporation of Sigma Alpha Epsilon for its stewardship of the property since 2003. My clients therefore encourage the city, upon designation of the Nichols House, to rename to that corporation all of the city taxes it has paid since 2003 over and above the amounts that would have been due on any similarly amounting structure in a Valdosta historic district. Doing so would ease for the corporation the burden of ownership of historic property, which always goes along with the honor entailed. It presents accord with the spirit of both local and federal laws on historic preservation. Both my clients and I pledge to assist the current owner, any future owner, and the city of Valdosta to help in whatever ways we can to preserve the Nichols House. We are sure that it would be possible to obtain grants and raise a considerable endowment to preserve the house and maintain the house should it become the property of a charitable organization. There are numerous charitable uses to which the Nichols House as it now stands would lend itself. It is obvious that viable non-charitable uses for the house also exist. The originally single-family Nichols House has already been adapted to be reused twice, first as a health point and second as a fraternity house. Four similarly sized houses on the block of Bay Street are currently adapted to be reused, two for roof housing, one for office space, and one for religious purposes. Valdosta has hundreds of buildings that have been successfully adapted to new functions. The City Hall is one of them. Patterson Street is aligned with it. From Oak to Gordon, the north side of Bay Street is lined almost continuously by adapted houses. Webster Street has an outstanding example. The Code and Office on the Deer Street is another great example in my personal favor. Valdosta has at least one broker reputed successful in selling historic properties to responsible new owners. Valdosta has developers, architects, engineers, and contractors well-deep to conceptualize, design, and complete adaptive reuse projects with long-term income potential. For any of them, the adaptation of the Nichols House would be the dream project of a lifetime. Its completion would be certain to gain them and Valdosta publicity in national magazines. Why would you not want such wonderful publicity for your city? Adaptive reuse is self-evidently a viable option for owners of historic property in Valdosta and including this property. It would be misleading to suggest that the Nichols House has no viable use. My clients above all beg you not to be persuaded to see the Nichols House as valueless. The only way to render the Nichols House valueless is to demolish it. Because your rejection of the opportunity before you will be directly demolition, only you have the power to reduce its value to nil. As it stands, the Nichols House is an asset, is the pearl of great price. Its value to Valdosta is immense. Its value to its owner would be increased by historic designation because such designation entails tax benefits. Its value to Valdosta lies in what can contribute to quality of life here. The Development Authority disclosed to a recent vote of recovery that the number one challenge to Valdosta's efforts to attract, keep, and expand industry is the difficulty of assured industrial employers a highly qualified and sustainable settled workforce. One key to overcoming that difficulty is education. Another key is quality of life. Educate people, people with high technical skills, smart people with many employment options can choose where they live. They consistently choose places with vibrant arts institutions, beautiful neighborhoods, and commitment to heritage. For years, they chose places like Charleston, Savannah, and Newlville. They do not choose places whose street skates are spoiled by icehors and pop mart by detention hogs, instead being graced by pieces of high-quality architecture. They choose places where historic preservation is valued and contributes to the constant improvement of street skates. They choose places that choose to retain the best of their past for the enjoyment of their future. They are now choosing places like Sarasota and Jacksonville, which are building lucrative programs of heritage tourism around buildings from the same year as the Nichols House. In South Georgia, instead of Valdosta, they're starting to choose places like Waycross, Thomasville, and Bainbridge. My clients, while your attention to the benefits comparing a preservation of a remarkable individual structure has brought those towns with what the preservation of the infinitely more remarkable Nichols House can bring to Valdosta. They ask you to recognize the value of that Nichols House maintaining Valdosta's competitive edge over the long haul. They urge you to act in the interest of the citizens of Valdosta, to remember your duty to act in others' interests, to advance the future of Valdosta in the right direction, to respect the independent expertise and good counsel of Valdosta's Historic Preservation Commission, to begin to reform historic preservation here with a positive step in that direction, to pause before throwing back a real treasure.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wilson, I have a question.
Okay.
Sir, in your professional opinion, if this home were to be picked up and moved to anywhere else in the city, would it still retain its historic value?
I think it would retain a great deal of its historic value. I think it would lose the value that it has due to, as Mily Foster described, having been designed specifically for the site and because of the position it has within a cluster of buildings that represent really the only contribution of Lloyd Greer to urban design.
All right. Mr. Mayor, if you could help me with this, but I believe that somebody corrected me if I'm wrong, that if we did name this piece of property for its home historic, that it could be moved anywhere the owner wanted, correct? Or is that incorrect?
It's a concrete floor, it'd be very difficult.
But may I say something about it? The house is built over crawl space and the floor is springy. So it could be moved. I don't know. I'm not qualified to say.
All right, since Mr. Wilson took all the favorable comment time, we'll now have time for anyone to speak in opposition to this request. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this request?
I'm there, Councilor Rice of the Georgia Sigma Housing Corporation. I do have a question. And I use ancestry as a local terminology, so you know it's on your mind. Unlike us Langley, I remember this property. I was involved in the decision to purchase this house and have been involved, and I'm here as a volunteer. We can take all the time you want, it's not going to pack my pocket.
You've got 14 minutes.
We have 14 minutes. Please, I would like to throw up some exhibits.
I didn't know y'all had a hat, but I would.
One reason I'm here today is because Georgia Sigma Housing Corporation, which has no funds to pay for it, so without becoming a volunteer, there'd be nobody to represent it. Get on into this. First one I want to make this afternoon is that the Housing Corporation is absolutely opposed to the designation of this property as a historical property. The Housing Corporation was not acquired with this application and had it in its ass, I would have told them no, which is their answer now as well. Why you ask? When the Housing Corporation purchased this property in 2003, there was no historical designation on this property on the public record. There was no discussion of historical designation of this property anywhere in the public or any newspaper articles that I've researched. So this property was purchased believing that not to be historical property, believing it to be a property that is appropriate for use by a particular. I can assure you, we will not have purchased a valuable historical property for use by a particular. They're historically bad on property, and they've been bad on this property. Reason it was bought is because it represented a good, long-term investment, which is because the housing down turned, it's not turned out to be, but nobody knows what the attorney's going to do. This turned it on all campus, and we wanted it out in case they in fact left. Well, the attorney has now left the property. Now, I can't look into these people's minds who bought this application and Dr. Wilson and I are childhood friends, and as far as we're dead, he's still smart, and has a great reputation, and I almost couldn't get up, getting so good. But the fact remains that this application wasn't bought until the rezoning phase. Fire it, nobody heard about it, the Nichols House. We don't call it Nichols House, we call it the E House. The Nichols live there, it's the Nichols House. It's the E House for a second. Over all those objections, this body voted to rezonate the property. That rezoning is not, in our mind, consistent with this property being designated historic. Based on that, we have a contract right now with another party that is continuing to fund this property by being designated as historic. This was the only offer after all the signs were put up, the only offer made to purchase the property. No one else approached. We approached the college, nobody else from then arrested this property until these folks decided they didn't like their partners. Now, I might have done the same thing in their situation, but I think we need to face what's ready going on. I think this is nothing more, this application is nothing more than just a little rabbit out of the hat, as we used to say. I've reviewed Dr. Wilson's report, and I'm certainly an architect expert, but in my practice, I do have to look at testimony and documents and try to determine if they're consistent and if they're entirely true. And I'm not saying this is not a truthful document, but it's a question that I have to frame to the council. This report clearly states that it cannot absolutely contribute this property to Lloyd Greer. Now, the other architects mentioned, I think they would be, Carter Costin would be distant, he's no longer with us, but he'd love to hear that he was held in that house, sir. Lloyd Greer was the only one who was really naturally loved. I've given him copies of his exhibits. I went online, I looked at Wikipedia, which is the Modern Dictionary, and it gives a list of properties attributed to Lloyd Greer in this city. This property is not owned there. There's also a list about the Atlantic Mission, so it's a map, and it tells the story of Lloyd Greer, and it lists the number of properties, and this property is not owned there. So all I say, I'm not an expert in architecture, but lots of people who compile the pamphlet sort of bring Dr. Wilson's position. This report also lists other similar properties in Valdosta. This is not the only property listed. There's a weight property that's in a very stable neighborhood, that's very similar to this property, that there's no question about, but not that's going to survive. I didn't attend, but others attended, took notice when Mr. Wilson raised a talk at DSU. Mr. Wilson stated in that talk that this was a fine new for a house plant with neoclassical design, which he has evidence of lasting historical significance, but it hasn't been reproduced since 1967. In the same talk, he represented historically, including all of Georgia and the South East, to determine that this type of plant was abandoned in the South in 1967. This is a California-type plant, it's not a South Florida plant. It is so unusual, but there are other homes that have that same unusual air conditioning. In order to say this is historic, one must conclude that when every local lay architect designs a property by design, that it's later abandoned because it's determined not to be favorable, that it becomes historic. I can't deny it there. The Housing Corporation tells you, we don't think this plant was proper because it is very energy inefficient and it was a very expensive property to keep up. There was also a reference in there that seemed to imply perhaps that the E House was as significant as the Crescent. I can tell you, I've been to the E House and we've had people visiting coming, I've never had anybody ask me, is this the other historical place on the Crescent? It just happened to happen. We went further and we contacted a member of the Nichols family that grew up in this house, and we asked what they thought about this designation. And what she categorically said was that her father would not want any such designation on their own against it on the wishes, because he believed it is everyone's right to do with their property, private property as they wish. We don't believe this is going to offend the family. This was a very nice home, it was built. This house also had a barbed-up home and had an old electric company. Very common. This house is 57. This house is on Bay Street Road. Its present neighborhood is an apartment across the street. There are duplexes and rental houses behind it. There's a tennis court, a gymnasium, and education building across the street. Next door is a pike at the curb. There's nothing in this area on Bay Street that is anywhere like a store, any road. This Bay Street Road is very heavily trampled. In fact, this area was very heavily trampled until desolation goes down. And what I understand on zoning, the proposed traffic count, even the new apartments built, it will be less than what desolation used to generate with food. So if there's some question about what can the Housing Corporation afford, let me tell you where we are with that. Over the last 10 years, we've had contractors telling us, trying to tell us what to do about this house. We've had numbers long enough to double to $260,000 to put this property in check. The Housing Corporation has spent over $25,000 in the last four or five years trying to keep the house little, including $10,000 for electrical work that actually was done because of the age of the electrical system in there, these fancy gadgets I love to refer to, the light still continues to be. So it's not in good shape at all. The attorney moved out of this house, won't make a reason, that's the money. The utility bills in this house are out of the room, and the cost repair was beyond the attorney's ability to pay those and still have a social life with the attorney. After they moved, several attorney brothers offered to rent the home from the Housing Corporation, gives a string of benefits, and continue to pay the note. One of his father was a builder's veteran from another city in Georgia. He came down to see where his son lives. He walked through the house, came back, and told his son, it's time to get out of the house. I condemn how this is in better condition. And that's exactly what they all did. They all got up, they all left, and everyone went out. After they moved out, no income, only the alumni left to pay this, who know the names of the names of the corporation. And there's only so long that alumni are going to support somebody, so that's why the house put up the site. So there's some funds for the Housing Corporation to go in and rehab, give up, that this should be designated. Now, those are kind of practical things. Now we need to come into some legal grounds for not making this designation. First of all, if you notice what we did at sea, that is a front house from today from the Secretary of State of Georgia's website, showing the site that the present status of Alden Homeowners Association Corporation. What that shows is that Alden Homeowners Association was never formed a corporation. It does not legally exist. All it has is two name registrations. And I'm sure the category tells you, the Georgia Department, Georgia statute, Don Sponcelle Corporation versus Eccles, that says there are no further de facto corporations in Georgia. What that means, if you don't form for the Secretary of State, if you don't get an article to give to the corporation, you don't exist. So the party who made this application is a legal nothing. And with it being a legal nothing, this application is a legal nothing. That means they only did it for a reason. And that would mean like a ghost gets up and makes this application. To be a corporation, you've got to follow the law. In the ordinance that they're relying on, it states in Section 238 Act 1.6 enhanced opportunities for fellow or state access. And I'm willing to say that it is false that we can't get historic designation. I would attach another tip, which is the statement, excuse me, the regulation of the federal entry of historic places, and it states that unless the owner consents to the designation, it cannot be designated on the federal entry. And we're not consenting. If you don't have that consent, you don't get that notice. Next is a legal matter. This house is not in historic, this house, what a legal code is to make this a spot designation. Do you believe that's illegal? Do we have a timeline for that? Also, if you were to void, if you were to designate this property, that is going to void this contract that we presently have, it's going to go away with it. That, I believe, would give right- That, I believe, would give rise to a claim against the city for grounds, including that this action to, that so designated is an effective combination. And we believe that no ordinance can be required to anybody to rehand a 60-year life. What goes down to it is the neighbors don't like the new apartments, and they don't want to use their own money to buy this house and have it offered by it. Instead, via this application, they seek to force the economic consequences to follow in fairness to the Housing Corporation. The court of the Housing Corporation respectfully asks the council not to adopt the recommendation of historical commission and not designate this property as historical. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone asking?